Hey, anyone, hello, guys?
I'm fine, Mr. Chair.
Just for the record again, Mr. Chair, that I'm happy, Mr. Chair, that there is also one guy, as he, John Fuat, is doing live cooperation in our session. This is relating to the freedom of information of our people, relating to the matters concerning what we're doing in life. Because I got information that I was... There is now... I was dubbed as "Mr. Live" accordingly. And I never ever asked for popularity, Mr. Chair. It is just a matter of principle that we need to be transparent with what we're doing here. "Dili na, umiyan kayo pa-live, ta'ayopasikatan..." No, I do not need that, Mr. Chair. I have my registration, kung gusto ko, kayo puro na. But it is why, Mr. Chair, I'm happy that... Kung na-ana si John Fuat, kung kinsapun ang mga stop ng tukso ba, at least, kindly do so. Because so that this will become a more transparent whole of tangguniang bayan para may inform ang mga tao kung sa'tong dibuhatin, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. Hello, hello, guys?
I'm John Fuat.
Yes, sir. A motion for adjournment? Is there any objection, we adjournment? No? The motion is yet by approved. Adjournment?
Mr. Live covering?
You did it, Mr. Live?
Wala pa eh. Tawalan ka na ng tumpa camera, basta talaga, naku tigo?
No.
Ah, wala, tawalan na 'yung... Ang lahat ng kasama.
Ang tayong manliliguris.
Vlogger. Ano 'yung vlogger, diyan. Ito kanini puluan, ano kanini vlog?
Vice! Okay, the hundred and twenty regular section of this online by and big is about the order. We start with... Please sign it by signing up. Okay. Good morning. Let's hold the round.
Mr. Chair, it's obvious that all these six are present and they are: Honorable Valentino Naterio Senior, Honorable Corida Dampalan, Honorable Manuel Lito Largo, Honorable Serakin Ramos, Honorable Rashid Wal, and Honorable David Capri. So on record, there are very unfortunate persons.
Please subdue them. Are we already in quorum? Recognizing the arrival of our SK chairman. Okay, let's put it. Have you seen, have you seen, probably there? Are we in quorum now? Okay, next, visitors are... Another board provider. Do... You don't have any visitors? Adoption is. Okay, it is a motion for the adoption of the older business. Seconded. Descension. Context. Reprising then. Motion is yet by approved. Preference.
Motion for the... Ah, no. Preference speech?
Yes.
Okay, so those who'd like to convey of the privilege to speak with ratio right hand and aspiration from the chair. Uh, yes, Honorable Dampalan.
Good morning. Um, good morning to our Presiding Officer, to our, uh, floor leader, and to all my colleagues. Uh, my privilege specifically regards to the ongoing project at Barangay Poglasion and Bankerohan that is amounting to fifteen million. Um, my concern is gihimo sila sa drainage wa... starting from the residence of Mary down to the intersection of Andul Street and Funda Street. Karoon, nakita na ako, mikamay malangdalan instead of implementing because as far as I know, Andul Street is considered as municipal road in between Poglasion and Bankerohan, diba? Boundary na to na. So, ang dalan, morag ni gamay because gihimo nila karoon nga uh, drainage kanal nga morag wa ganii abutong one meter pag the age of the complete pavement. Kana ba? Uh, mauna ang concern sa kanal, diba? And secondly, um... Uh, I mean, what, kung mahuman na 'yung project, morag white laro outlet uh, morag naputol dito dapit ilahang river because na 'yung mga residents sa unahan na dili mo agree na agian sa kanal. So ang gihimo sa contractor morag divert napa sila dahang liko-liko, I think dili siya tubog sa dukoy namigipangandoy sa mga residents diba na ma-solve ang bahat. Because first and foremost, ang fifteen million nga grant grant na siya diba from the national para na siya sa drainage kanal para masulbat ang problema diba since diba dapit sa boundary of Poglasion and Bankerohan mauna'y catch bising sa pila upat kapuro. So here comes the problem, morag ang contractor, wala na 'yan nakita ang problema. So, morag ang mapagadto sa DPWH, I was even present uh... akong bitodlo sila hahanga, why not? Di diretsya na lang dyan ang kanal going to to uh, sa Salido River. Katung Andul Street, di diretsya na lang dyan, wala na 'yung liko-liko. Pero wala pa nila gihimo. Na iman, nag-start sila kanal gitan dito sa May Amin C, going down dito sa Amua, then naputol, bigay nila ibit la. Ang problema ka 'yung la, na imporal dito sa May Andul Street. So, okay, wala na daw to na api. So yun ako, asaman ang uh, asa kon sama, ang gusto mo sa mantugi lang sa nila, api ng ato ang municipal engineer. Gusto din ako, wala na nag-request ba 'yan ako sa la-session kung pwede nadili ang municipal engineer and ang representative sa contractor.
Do you have an proposal?
I don't know.
No?
May invite? Oh. Mauna nga ako ang concern lang. Hay, karoon pala, nagproblema ng mga tao dito. Nagproblema na. Ever since, problema gina na mo ang bahat diba, ang outlet sa bahat ay diba, mawagi dito sa mosque ga... bahat na man dyan na diba, ay dito po sa Jupiter naharang na po sa mga residences dito. So ang, usaragun na, tayo nga naapadili sa tuwa si Engineer Santuyo. Siya nagun na, nag-ingon nga, padunong na lang dyan sa tanito. Then iagi man nila at padunong uhasin street. Oh. Namay mubabak po dito, ang ako lang gagingon nga, di na lang dyan, di diretsya na lang dyan dito sa Andul Street. Pero, I don't know. What went wrong? Ngano mo wala nakita po? Tabi sa wala na rabot, Chair.
Okay, and then the representative, Honorable John, Honorable... What's your name? Okay, uh, that problem will be answered by the Honorable Adi Goody, sir, from the corner because he has an invitation for this session. Okay, Honorable Prodiener?
Next. Would like to convey of this meeting hour. Yes.
Hello, hello. Hello, good morning. So... Uh, para sa ako ah, manok ay concerned gamay about my privilege, about sa tong solid, uh, solid management. Kay, nagsabahan ako, almost two months uh, ang basura na sa uh, Pantinan Highway National Highway, Pantinan Pantinan, Atepangi, Gurepangi na dyan naka, naka, fondo sa Datlin na katsaga. So, na-surprised lang ako ngano nga previously, gina, gina-pick up na. So wala dyan ni tambak nga basura na sa Alon National Highway. So, I was talk with our, our ready captain in Pinnant, so this was sila na-surprised kay nako, uh, na'tay solid waste management program, dayon ang topos manggut na'to, auto prevent sa karastato environment. So kung ang may tabo ang kanan basura na sa Datlin Highway sa medid, ang, ang tanan to ba, ang tanan to na'to sa tong ang kain tan sa Lungsont Saytel dili dyan na'to ma-finalize nga na tubog sa sa atong solid management. So, matoy nato gina nato, si Kamara Kapitan o Ah, Konsial, ako lang ibroad out para may mo antun na'to kaya nato tubog lang sa katerimban, ngano na diya, gaya start, gaya start up gaya start ang mga basura kay, kando sa gina bonit na siya. So, kung maabot siya, pilak tabo na so sihoro antinan uh, may mo siya ako, karan uh, dumping iliyas sa basura. Jay, from Atepangi Gurepangi, gina fondo dyan sa rangipinan, kaya mo re-pick up pick up iliyan nila. So katu siya, um, atong best area. Ikadawa ang, ang IP, ang IP rame kanan pinbelding program uh, panahon nga, sumatamo to dyan na'tay annual celebration IPd sa dapat, dito misa salahi, sa gaa celebrate misa atong uh, province ang away dya IP celebration d So, ako uh, ako rame dito, taybalo, puntad dito sa municipal events, lokal lang sa atong council events, dyan sa tong mga barangay teman nga bisa gamay nga pagdigom aroma, pobra na'to nga na dyan IP ganyo sa Lungsont Saytel kala ba kayo tao, bisa uh... kanan gamay nga programa para sa IP sa ako lang ganityo kung ako na'tay may mo sa municipal bisa, bisa kano nato, habdi ma... may mo na'wo ang amukalikan. Secondly, nafoe plano ang IP na'to na'tay replanting program ang topos misa atong mentor na program para makakandak meo re-procesong project sa iliyas sa atong mentor. So, katalan nga, ako mga yuko puntap para manualize for na'to, mohean atong mga IP. Kay, depende dito sa CI si ATM R. Gusta dyan support bit, and then say lang niyon so naganjot din. Until sambong na si Bogaet swadito, gaa celebrate sa pinbelding sa annual IPd program. Thank you.
Okay, due to the first problem that Honorable Fuat is uh, talking about due to the waste disposal can we call for the presence of the mentor during the ademahers? Okay, who's the visitor?
Next. Next.
Okay. What's your motto?
Yes, go ahead.
Another preference. Honorable? What's your other question?
Yes, good morning, everyone. Um... This is with regard to all applications for reclassification of land. Um, sayod mantang nga daghang mga gusto mag-reclassify or reclassify sa ilahang mga yuta according to its use. And reclassification is under our local ordinance and sa DAR is the conversion of land. That is from agricultural to other use. Maybe from agricultural to residential or agricultural to uh, commercial. But sa atong local ordinance, naapuntay from uh, residential to commercial, no, ganang other use na nga, acknowledge na nga, hindi na kinaanan ulang conversion. Uh, naamong ko 'yung mga nag-apply. So, when I talk with our MPO, Engineer Nifa, she said, kung pwede, pa'ng mga nang-apply may sayod mantang na daghan pang nang-apply uh, kung pwede, pending lang sa, until makahingot ta's ato ang new ordinance ma-update na'to ang ato ang new zoning or CLUP ordinance. That is because daghat ka 'yung mga bagong um, amendments, requirements sa pagtukod sa bisud, no, sa bagong department. So, uh, instead of, daghang mga angay, ubili angay. So, na hangyo, na kung pwede, pending lang sa, dito sa Tamo Entertain anyway, na alam na ang ilahang pag-gamit sa yuta ang ato lang is uh, magpaabot na lang ta' by end oh, this is, by next year nga ma-bag-oh na'sa ang ato ang um, salingalan uh, CLUP or zoning ordinance. Uh, that is because dili iputak bag-oh basta-basta, unless and until mahuman po'to um, training or similar workshop sa paghimo, sa bag-oh or pag-amend sa CLUP or so ordinance. So, um, I would like to take note sa ato ang SB Secretariat na if ever na 'yung mga referral to that um, moale na lang, explain na lang daan para dili na siya paabot dili, no? So, without, dili na siya, dili na pwedeng mag-block ang applicant instead, magpaabot na lang sa time na maabot na siya. I think that would be all. Honorable Chair.
Okay, another question? More?
What's your relation, Honorable Capire?
Regarding page one, I'm very happy and proud to, ano na, to inform everyone ang katu ordinance ang atong sponsor about establishing the municipality of Igles, kataruhang Pangbarangay Support Program its mechanism and appropriate answer of nahuman na yun ang duha ka Sabado na nakatag tao, trains and seminars atong mga Lupon and nakita, mid na'to ang ilahang eagerness, ba? And ikosalamat po'ta kay Franny Gregor Mayga for ang iyahang mga topics, ikakangquad related dyan saka ayon, nakuha kay nila in-ebensay ilang uh, road playing nga, naitabo atong mga duha ka Sabado. Uh, kaga hapon po't, naitabo, napo ng utiking so officially naanagitay Lupon Federation na established sa ato ang municipal. And nagpasalamat po'ta kay Mayor, kay aside sa atong incentives na nakabutang ang ordinance sa iya pag 'yung gitungagan I believe from ten thousand so first, naniyo pag 'yung fifteen thousand dungagan daw niya from her own pocket. Nagpasalamat ko kay nakita niya ang idea behind this ordinance, o iyan, gita ga'ang usuporka. And at the same time, iya pong gitang invite Lupon Federation officers na for an educational trip sa Barangay Ulingan di Colob City kasi sila daw tong nakaka-award according to the BILG, regional award niya siya, tarong to Iga. And, um, naano ko ipadai pagta-bong, maitabong disaster preparedness na seminar nga ginatawag na'to water search and rescue training on November twenty-two to twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, kaoban sa atong LG, no, di Iga nga, katung identified na barangays sa, naflagroom. So, the minangad of three ka-representative, so I really believe as Iga president, dina-nokan 'yung pagkapacity sa atong mga frontliners would be a very great help because sila itong mga, uh, makatabang sa ato ang, sa ato ang governance dery sa ato ang municipal. Salamat.
Thank you, anybody else? No more?
Who's the provider?
Honorable.
Can I also have my own?
Yes, go ahead.
Come here, let me tell you, uh, this is just uh, once again, the morning to this host body. Uh, I am just uh... I would just like to suggest me to the secretariat it is possible nga, makusin dito sa tungsi sa natanong resolutions and ordinances para, while on one ton of consumption para kung dun atay concerns, usap ka ordinance click on ta'sa kita na'to. Okay, Roha?
Nananatik, thank you, thank you.
Nananatik?
Thank you.
Ang system is titled, will you click no? Ah, okay, thank you. Thank you, that's all, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, thank you. Honorable Chairman I would like to request the presence of our representative to represent the project. Okay. Uh, who inform us from her end what are the reasons, ganon na dili tapa accept ang mga request for reclassification because if you will make for me kung magulat ta' na ma ang indar benato ang atong during ordinance, the to take several months, so we will send that to the private years. We have experience, yeah, years. Dugay kayo, dila diyon we will be deprived of the revenues that the supposed to be makuha na'to inay mura the apply for reclassification from residential to commercial and look at na'sla, well, this is perfect. Madadko, parang sila kayang mga establishment, so batit pride teryana. So, we will con, we will put the present here. No? Maginu na sa mga mississipery. So, we would like to have the questions of our uh...
MPOC?
Municipal.
Okay, anybody who, who can't call me? Okay, while, while waiting for the MPO, Mr. Brother, be there. I would like, I would like first to accommodate our to visit personnel because naman is may mga trabaho. Uh, first, atong concern ni Honorable Fuat, nasi felix mo. The what to?
I need to suspend rules.
Okay.
Mo to suspend the rules, according to our visitor.
Okay, rules suspended? Okay, Honorable Fuat, have a person?
Hello, good morning. Apa lang is at the next bar? Nah, isto lang dito sa mga, sa barangay captain o barangay kagawad na, tiyan na lang sila, ngano ang atong basura, asa karamula ang senapika when sa ulma, kada si mama, gina kuwasi ako, ditamak pas na dyan, ditambak na, ang morag, maot na kaitan na'ko, bananas sa National Highway dahil lahat sa ang basura. So, ako lang may geresa uh, tangguyang bayan, may geresa ka'ong, para ma-toban ni problema na'to, so re then planning ta'ong solid waste management, and then karoon, gaklaster, natah ngano konya among solid waste so on sa ka'ong, and pak anak, na tusak katerimban. So katalan sir, sir Bado.
Thank you, sir Fuat. Uh, good morning, uh, present host body. To, ati, ati, naman siwang mga sir. Sir, can I be recognized?
Yes. Honorable?
Gusto lang ta', nako iclarify and iimreconcehan buhay, buwan nga, nag-ingon siya nga siya together with the barangay captains and council mga tanong ako, tapukin sa mga barangay, kasi na-acto naman si, si Fuat, mentor sa among iyan mga barangay ginatagaan, napudin of mga instructions and at the same time, may pa-training napudin sa Lumbia para ma-clarify lang unta, bakit baka wala pa dinay pinaklaro, magpatawag tsaka diba eh?
Katalan, kung atong tanan of from uh, Gurepangi, Atepangi, Uppinan, so um, tamalim ang basura na dyan sa National Highway uh, siguro kana't lang wala lang kong angka sa neto iter, katalan, neto iter, this uh, natuto ko gina, gina-pick up siya so mana, ang, nalang ikanay nga, ikuariba, ngano mo diba makuha, intermission, at least uh, kapag, kapalokod, una'na ako pwede ko pamitan, kaya namanggut sa municipal kapalokod ko muto ba, kapalokod mo dito sa video.
Yes, sir.
Uh, once again, good morning. Uh, two weeks ago, we called the attention of all the barangay captains and we requested them at least three representative para ma-reorient na po'd sila sa ato ang solid waste so they came to Lumbia and uh, that was the reason na iintay po'd namang taga DNR. Uh, under sa atong National, uh, Solid Waste Management na ano act ang nakabutan dito, sir the local, uh, the municipality is required to collect ang basura sa barangay dito sa MRF dapat sa MRF lamig siya kundi, sa MRF, ang barangay dapat isigilig, ang barangay dito dapat masigilig dito sa MRF pag dili sa household, dili dito dapat na'to faon pag dili man ato na Monday, ang sa household nga, kanan sa makiit atong faon ang ato 'yung faon, dito dito sa MRF, kay dito sa MRF we expect nga, nakasigilig na siya dito now, previously, practice na'to na nga, barangay nasalagalan na sa mga household gina-collect maot na'to sa talagang nga basura dili na'to matebuhan dito, kay wala pa atong mga itipo man dili man ato dito ma-cheer na, naata't itipo every day kadi dagan siya, nali sa na'to tabon but for now, nasa mga eight, ninety percent na fully covered na'to ang Lumbia kala namin mga, ano, kala namin mga messrs na dili na mimo kuha dito sa mga household unless naasya sa MRF ang ipa'ong na karoon barangay Tes Bambiera sa MRF na nina gawa uh, ang Detras Village ang barangay na po'd nagkuwasi ng mga basura sila na po'd ang deliver dito sa Lumbia uh, Poglasion nga, na po'd sila'y sakenan, sila na po'd ang dahato dito ang problema, kini mga barangays, pangy, Atepangi kani lang y MRF, ibotangan nila sa natin sa kasaba wala pod isigregit, dibutanan ang nila basura tangan. So, naman kaya, malata, ala itong karton, buti, so buti na dito lang, sa to niya, isagot man nila. Kalung, naitabohan na kun, ang sa upper pani, among ito kahapon na kwan na lang ang hisan, ano, to siya, violation to siya, so, wala isigregit, maolaman tanga, naagakon siya dito among ito, wala ng upper pani, ang sa tenan, wala sa MRF dibutan, naasadap rin sa dalaan. Manakong problema, kaya isa may account table, isa na itong basura, itong, wala pa dito sa MRF, so among itong ina ng barangay na, to pwede, dito dito ta sa MRF, ibutan, kaya among itong designated area na, dito tamu-collect. Ah, yes, sir.
Nato, sa may problem, kay, kule, kilakah eh, ah, almost perawan yun na, naniya, kuna, ah, kung baso, kung ano, koreto sa basura ba? So, biya, yun na, biya, biya, na gina, biya, siya sa, karekin na betaran, kalung, wala na gi, katap dito sa household, wala, takay na, takyan yan, so, wala pa tong MRF, biya, na yun. So, so, ika yung pong, nakay bakong balak, wala gi, prenendikapikan, pero kala, ah, ako ano, punjer, bakuwa, tama siya biya, at least, ah, kaya ni mama, to nere, kala ang kumti man ang to, kaya niye.
Sridohan, ni mam, neni or, kada ako tabasura, biya, na yun, mone, kada dun yun, gasridohan municipyo kada, kesa una, kilakah bulan na, almost one year, biya, na gina pick up sa mong yun ya at bang pa yun sa ang poro, mara, mara, ma'uloko ba? So, umay man, tara, buto barang solid waste management, ah, na bandere, ah, pan, under, banting site sa imong yun ya, so, ako, ah, wala po ikuwan, wala po i objection sa imong pan, kaya, nun, may mga topan mo, last week, what to let you go? What to let you go, kana, basura biya, almost three, three months na. So, sa to pa, last kaya sa, tamakanan man get na to, so, dito lang na to na, sir, kay ah, antaw mangod, dili, ah na, andan makinat biya, then, ang kana, ato na, yun, kana, ah, big, big, kua ang basura biya dili, kana, na biya sa, hang, ato ba, is, but, kay, kami pwede maabot sa baho. Dayon, kami pwede ng, nga, kami mga, or, dili na, kung man, oh, kawan, mani, kaya, um, basura na lagan wala taas na ba kuran, ikol mga, bitlang kay mga tuhan re sa, sa, ang dito, at, kaya, kasi, buka kong cero, then, ponit, lakon, so, katulang, sir, kay kung naaman, naaman, kay orientation sa barangay captain, kana, basura, wala pa kay orientation, biya, na gina takay, so, bale, bale klaro, sa video, katulang.
Okay, sir, I'm not gonna ikuwan dito, sir, ah, for the last time. And then, I'm not gonna i, i-sak balik ang barangay na, itang, sinisila ang, ang MRF, then, direct na to mag-ginwo kada, kana, damside, ah, kuan, kana, buat, ano, mga, asan, dibutan dapat ito dito sa MRF, kaya, mo, kay posa tong MRF.
Okay, Naboro Bol, ina-try, repose.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, ah, ang, among, ano, kay, kana, pan, then, is, di can sagad di ka mano, kung iallow pa sagad, biya, kung namorad repetition, dito siya nga, mga regular siya, but we will try, we will suggest na, only until pass, ah, another proposal na madugan nga sa, so, sir, na, unang dito, sir.
But, but, Naboro, if the barangay is relating, okay, yeah.
Ah, ya, ya, at, at, dito, dito, si, ano, ang agreement, mga atong sa Lumbia atong mga barangay na aplan, or atong sa marura, na, ano, direct na nila, waiter, mga nila, ikuwan, i-compuse ang, ah, parasyo, konsen, kini ramang sa population ng mga barangay, kaya, wala sila i-compuse, ah, area motong ginakuha, kung naman, provided na, wala si sagol, o si regited, kaya, magbisa mapod na, kami paang, o, ano talaga may mga barangays na, nan, nag, ano, nag, niadversana ang salito, ang kay mangchanti sa door towel, ang towel pod, kaya, nag, ano, may, nag, then clean up ni sa mga barangay pizzeria para makuha ang mga basura, then, magcompuse dito sila, among na sila ginak, intarisen, among po sila ni-inspection, kay isasamang tanawang, kasi yung barangay nga naasay i-compuse pit, para, direct na ilabay nila, kay sayang, kay dakutan space makuha sa tuang sakyanan, kay ginagamit nila.
And, ah, yeah, in addition, in addition, dos barangays na nag-collecto, binabanan, wish. Dapat, magsulgu, sila, uti kolita.
Yes, sir.
Naboro, Jeff, yeah, Naboro. Naboro, begin, ah, may, lo, Naboro, please. I think, we, ah, code regarding solid management, ah, solid waste management code. Di pa kada barangay, napisilay, tawaling nyan, solid waste management code, for ordinance? Dapat na, siya, oh, oh, yeah, para habsay, direct na magsig problema. Ang ilang, ang ilang waste management ordinance, must be reviewed by the menlo. Para unsa problema, unsa surpata to, so, at, our, ang atong, atong menlo pod, kapalokong, sampat tabang sa ila. Once you have an sister, you must let them face the consequences sa, sa ordinance. Di matamo, except ako kaya, pero, what is stated there? Ma, ma-arigolar man siya. Eh, eh, and, and I think, supagka ma'ko ordinance sa regarding waste management, there's always a guideline. The National Waste Management Code, we will give it, eh, no, dito, that was given, and, kundi ikamasunod I think, you'll face some consequences under dulo, para di ka ma-problema. Kana, ilang ordinance sa, you must owe it to the menlo, you'll review. Once you, once you will read verse of the code, di pa na po kawang, san patabang sa ila. Kung, kung sayo mo, eh, kiaro habsayan ka na, that would be, honor, Jeff, ay, okay, yeah.
Ah, so far, so far, ang may, ni, ni, wala kong sinang ordinance, ang barangay population, wala si can be dinanila. Nagyada po dila, nako sila, dino mga, ah, adaption sa ato ang, ah, sa po rin, sir. So, kuli, ang mga barangay, maka ano po sila, sila tong i, i-talo para, dito natamotan ang unita sila.
Naboro, Jeff. The, the way of, ah, make an ordinance, true, adoption is true, pero depende mga sa mong lugar, but di, mantan lugar, kaya, ang san isultable, ang, di, mga, ng, ng, ordinance, if it pass replacement and, and, and we will just agree, especially the menlo, for kala, pa, asa kamusuod na habsayan the waste management, eh, di maduga sa, di papayon, the castan, so, naboro, Jeff. Naboro, kiti.
Ah, and I'm not support kani, Mr. Badan, pag hindi ka tong mga tanan may raise, nito si Hargual. Ah, ang main responsible dyan is barangay, atong tanan iyahang raise, barangay dito siya among, ang dito, takulangon, kasi for how many times, for how many years matawak lang midnato na, twelve, regular sa LGU Eklis, but ang pinaka basic is, dapat direct na mukulek tahon sa mga matangbalang, dikbalay, ang wala na segregit. Isakot, regit sila katuw, para yakanita rin, sa Facebook, nagkaytay post na wala po nung ikuha sa LGU Eklis. Pero ang problema, mangod, siyempre, naman kau, nila, wala man na segregit sa barangay. Among, yun na, ah, ako, kapitan ko, kari lang, kung yun na, naku, among, dyan na, siyang ah, obligation, among, anak siya, ikaduha ako, ang gusto ko na ko, i-correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Felix, no? Pero ako may balan, mangod, na sa tong ginatawag na MRF, it's a separate building nga pwede na, ni mo siyang gamitun, nga, another source of income, kasi mo kolekta, it's a different meron pa, di mo tanong garbage, pero, kung po, ang ginatabo, ang MRF, nga atong ginainon, nga, funded sagad mura siya basuranhan, diba, di mani, Anna, ang material recovered facility? The basuranhan, mukul siya na, so, tendency is, di, more siya natapukan kanan, pero, maya pa, diba? Sa pare, punta siya, naagit siya, may operation, full operation na lang, diba, maano, bitsya, diba? Inana, kaluta, dapat ang MRF?
Yes, yes, ma'am, ah, ang operation, ang structure, we can say na, ah, wala, ah, wala manggupod siya kana, specific nga size dito, ma'am, na mawid ng MRF, ang dibutanan dito sa balaw, is naasay space nga, pwede siya ma-segregit, ni mo, ah, dito mag-segregit, ah, segregation, kung di can sa household, dala, o niya dito, na itao nga, pagman, niya moti, musigregit or, kung sabalay, parandahan, isigregit na siya, kaya, kana, dibutan dito, abla, kape, dala, ah, so, ah operation na si gurong, atong kita mo biya, ah, dapat na dito tau, ang, ang, sa'yo dito na mo, ang traffic, nga, o, ang basura, dito, na dibutan, para, bilis ya, mag-sagol mura, man, ikuwan, kana, sa, ah, terms of area na, direct na daw, kun, sa MRF kaya, the boundary dito, pag, ah, ilang basura, wala isigregit, so, mara, inana, ang
Ah, 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 point blank, eh, and I need, sir, direct inapasabot nga, at, ang, isa sa mga solution akod para to solve this solid waste management, is to look for funds for additional units of MRF. Bali mo na kuha, kasi, pwede man, isa na kay MRF sa barangay, kasi dapat isa na, kasi mo, gasti na pod another tao, mo, bantay, anak, siguro, basuranhan, kana, pa pwede nga, bailain na pa diners, but not MRF.
At, kaya, kami naisan ganito plano, may kay, John, sa tungtay, ang pinod, John wala'y basura dyan sa dakin sa dalaan, di pa ko ni panghambok, kasi, ah, kapitan, kay, name program in every, in one month, nagenme, collective, kana, green project program, mukulit ang basura, dayon wala pa ni sumon, ah, kana, di can sa municipyo, magulit ta, kalo, na national level wala'y basura, biasa, kung kay, ang, kada, kwan, kada poro, mangita, sila, oh, iriya, luna kung asan nila pwede ilabay lam basura, so, mede, direct siya solution, kene ni kolita sa municipyo, ang basura sa tenan, solve ng problema, so, I challenge, ako di challenge si kapitan ka kung may mo, talitka, oh, luna, para nabayan ni mo sa imong, kau, kani, yung basura, kay on the way, ma-solve ang problema na to sa basura din sa tenan, kay, kung tikapan ini ma-stuck madaot ang truck, utreka, ganyan, ni mo, so, na to, mora na, so, ang solution, siguro kini mga barangay nga, na, 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 pay mga luna, takutokay, ser, tong, dapat bagplano ah, provided sa atong, ah, kwan, kana, ordinance sa solid waste management, di pwede bang bagplano tenan, lapa uhit pa, upay si sa kaitar ya, dayon labay, so, wala ni problema municipyo so, kung biya, na sakal saga, dina tiga, ah, kalung, no, tana, ang isiyang karon, ah kamo, sa municipyo, municipyo, ako, blantaw, naku, blantaw, biya, ni, pero, utao, po, na, ok kapal mane, kung, nate basura biya, per, takaso, so, kaya, kina, abot, pala, n, kaya, naku kami na ni kawat ne, after mong, taga, taga barangay nga, utao ni new path, support sa green project program, para ma-prevent na to, kene, ah, maka support sa solid waste management so, katulang, katunglas, pizza, bainting, ni koyok po, napunito, basura, wala'y size so, gina, kwan yun, naku, wala, na to, gina, sa, start time, naku, manita, tag, direct kana, lapa, di ayut, tag, biya, na, pagbutang, wala, ibalik, so, karam, pizza, bainting, ma koyok, napuko kay, as a leader, ikaw, ah, mo manage sa, la, punta ang pagsegregit, punta ang ni mo, pag, identify ah, malata, di malata, so, re, ba, detalho yun, koh, mas, give post, kasi, na, kaya, ayaw, give post, kay ma'ulok, talak, gusap, temang koh, so, katulang, sir, kay, di pa, man, yun, ako si kapitan, kung, ikaw, kay kapitan pelik, sa kaitar ya, dayo, ato man, yon, ah, sanito, ah, tani, dayo, sila, na, na, pay, dayo, mubayan sa to, thank you.
So, kani, in support to, ah, menlo, honorable, ah, sir, thanks, Badan, no? Ah, ang kasalbaran sa problema sa atong solid waste, ah, problem, no? Ah, naasang barangay, kung ang barangay, ang ilahang barangay solid waste management committee na sila, cock with plan, then supported with an ordinance, siguro, there is no reason na maka problema ang LGU, because, based sa ilahang plano, biya, na, imo, taku, unsa ilang pagay moon sa ilahang, ah, solid waste nga, mga garbage, no? And, ah, proper coordination na lang dyan na, with the menro once yun na plastan na nila ang ilang plano, unsa unila ilang mga basura, unsa pag-segregit kinsa ang mo manage sa ilahang solid waste, ah, segregation skill, siguro wala'y barangay nga magproblema sa basura, and bugaan ang problema sa ato ang menro, so, kinahangan lang, siguro, ah, this time, nakita man na to, ah, kani problema ah, two months ago, lang, na, siya, naitabon, no? So, hinay-hinay, ang gini siya, kapasabot sa mga tao, and then, diha sa tenan, siguro, kana, gatapok na basura kaya, uban mga tao, na problema sa ilang basura, same with what happened sa diversion, direct sa magdaup ah, dala, dres, teha, kay, gatapok na basura, biha, kay, katong, ah, wala na ginapick up ang mga basura so, naka pending, tenan, ang uban, kay, direct sila gusto nga, manimaho ang ilahang ah, kuan, wala, ang ilabay na lang nila dito, ipangtapok, wala problema sa mga, ibang mga barangay but then, kani mga basura, kung kitang mismo, from the household, isigregit na to na daan bigamit ta makalabay, oh, basura, ah, direct ta makalabay nga, every week, siguro, sa, sa kabulan ang atong usap ka sako, di na siya mapuno, kung segregated ang atong basura and then, kung naatay luab na, kana, luna, pwede man na to, mahimo ta dito, oh, compost pit dito na to, ilabay ang atong mga malata, para direct na magproblema ang barangay po tapangan na to, atong barangay, direct na problema barangay, kita na mismo, from the household dapat ang, pag-segregit na to sa basura, para pagkuha sa barangay, segregated na, then that's the time, salute, ah, LGU, nga, segregated ang mga, ah, basura and actually, gatabag dali ko kay sir Felix, the invite, ang uban mga barangay nga, mga poro sa ilahang, ah, IBC, sa kuan, so, mura, in support to the LGU, ginahimon ako, ganata cook time, ah, na, basta na lang invitation ah, sa, we schedule, bato na dali, putong, bankerohan, mo, ten ko silang session, bahay na po, aning basura kay, problema na po dito.
Thank you, thank you, yes, additional.
Ah, additional lang, para makita pod na to, no, nga, naghihiok kita na tong executive, kasi kung di basa pod na to, ato ang W seven social plan? kasi kung di basa po na to, ato ang W7 social plan, pag sa inventory, talimong dumon, at the former SD, um, sorry, what? Pointing out na underman gayo ang ato ang member, nakita na to, di ikiniya mga facility, mo to kung ginay mo, genitay, sir, sir, unsaon man ako pag-invite sa imo, magpatabang, mi identify sa compost it, kaya may ramang gitmo kaayo. So, na identify gitna siya, and by next year, I believe, mo oni siya ang ma-open na position, for them, duma atakabuo, under solid waste management, mo oni environmental management specialist, two, and coastal resource management, ecosystem management specialist. So, rest assured, ah, kaniya to mga ginaproblemanan karoon, in terms of, ah, sa ating LGEU nga action, ginabuhatan o ginatagaan to the priority.
Committee on Solid Waste Management, and the barangay captains, plus the member, eh, consolidate any one of yon mga, meron ko, I have a suggestion, I, I am also in, in, so, I agree for the idea of, ah, normal papire, papire, kada MRF nga, wala anak, dihanay na argue, ah, asa ibutangan mga basura, instead of spending again for the MRF, kana to bitaw MRF, no? So, you pray, consolidate good ideas, so, para ma-kuwan na to. Ang, ang una mga playos yon eh, mga barangay captains, mga barangay tagawat, yapi niyong mga barangay tagawat, so, imposer. Ah, Committee on Solid Waste Management, members, plus the member, mura 'yong kasurban yon eh, I know, one of these days, binata ka na to, kana to ordinance sa solid waste management sa, ah, LGEU, to responsibility, wala, watuna na siya, mga supervision na lang, every barangay must have their own, solid waste management ordinance, kinahangnan para marilip, ah, induce a responsibility guy. I, I remember one time, si honorable Dad Sabion, told me nga, hile na kinahangnan maghimong obigansan barangay, because the, the, solid waste management ordinance of, and he, it's a converse of the barangays, according to him, pero laylaing manasip pa siya yon sa barangay. So, ang barangay na lang siguro, natutag ano, o authority, power, na mawag mo sa gilang, o galinong na ordinance, solid waste management, based on the, based sa ilang situasyon, laylaing manan situasyon, sa kuwan. So, diya, sihoro, tao po panong, alam siyo.
Before we go to the barangay situation of honorable Dad, yeah, hello, what do you think?
Naku, I, actually, sir, honey, I, 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 I challenge, tamo, tamo'y ulit si solid waste sa matang barangay ba? Kasi karoon, ah, to be frank and, and ano, honest, ah, the job, probleman mo kaayo sa council, because, kato'ng inaisis nga ang creation net nila, I confer you to be relevant, for you to be, kana pang naku, kani'ka'y sinag impact sa barangay, kuhaan na siyang responsibility guy, pa-committee chair, kaniyang IP representative, and I think okay siya, so, in, kasi maki-partner sa member.
Last na, sir, last, last? Ah, last yon lang, ah, I would like to extend my ano, my, ah, great, ah, my, pasalamat sa inyo, sir, sky, di accord niyo tong kuwan, mo, um, moa, ah, authority, give the authority to mayor, can enter to moa with, ah, DNR, kaya tagaanabutan nila o, ano, machine, actually, sarang na with tong abot, shredder, and katong composter, na makatabang to dito sa, sa building kay, with kay to na to para sa, malata o katong, ah, plastic, ah, shredder, and, and also, ano, ng, need a sitting also with the pen bro, kay ang provincial government, di pa nita siya o, ano, ah, website na ilang tabangan, na itil ang, i-open po sa itil na pwede na to matabangan, na itil, hile po sila galabay sa tuwa, sa ilang basura, ang problems nga, hile po na to ang ilahang, ano, supportive, meron na sila galabay dito, na, at is makatabang siya, mas may po. Na sila'y, kuwan, na sila'y, in kami nga, machine katong, densifier, pwede siya mutunaw sa mga plastic, para hinong ng mga, halobla, or kaniyang banko, so, mas may pa dito nga ng butangan sa tuwa po, kara, katong mga mapolek dito, magamit ma, magamit na to. Ah, mag-ano pa me sir, mag-subway team me next week, and i-open po na po, na, sir. So, makatabang sila, di na smile.
Okay. Do you have another visitor, Mr. Pro, from engineering office?
Problema sa bangkiruan? Ah, honorable Dad Palad?
Yes, ah, engineer, ato na kisya ni engineer, ah, nagali siya ihihata diha ko. Kanyang mga po, ya, bay ni sa, dalawang diha, engineer sa Andul Street, kana drainage diha, or, and then, si engineer San Puyo, naku siya diha kara, para makatsadugang po, or, ah, ah, para ma-explain po niya, unsa'y, concern na mo diha, datita, ang bay ni sa drainage, nga murad, wala man dyan, na tumantong, unsa dyan ang, murad binabision na to nga, para saklaro dyan nga, masumpad ang pagbaha diha, since, you very well know much, catch basing dyan na diha, sa upat kapuro, and then, ah, most part of population, ang bagsa sa tubig diha, apod sa muha, then, ang bangkiruan, so, wala siya nga, takukayo na siya nga, problema nga, ako nakita nga, bili, murad, kanyang project na fifteen million, murad hile ra masumpad, ang, isagubang na mo diha nga, pagbaha every, ah, night, sukay nga ulan. In a matter of two hours, continue straight, pa nga, suod na sa ambalay, especially karoon, may patong wala ng project, hile pa mo suod sa amua dito kaayo, karoon, krami, suod na dyan sa suod sa balay sa akong mama, din kano na po.
Um, good morning to this August money. By the way, the DPWS ah, provided fifteen million project, ah, entitled flood control, so, of course, ang LGEU qualified. Ah, on August five, two thousand twenty-one, the mayor, um, wrote a letter to the district engineer, Mayor UPL, Al Catupas, requesting for stoppage of project construction, so, na received nila, ah, August six. And, ah, we are thankful that the district engineer acted immediately, and, ah, solved the, sa barangay population, dito na, we attended the, ah, engineers from DPWS and, ah, sa, sa tuwa, sa LGEU, sa session, sa population, because, ah, nagliklamo po. Um, I do not know about their design, because they did not have, apply sa copy of their plan. Um, Andul Street is, we know that Andul Street is fifteen meter road. Um, the existing concrete pavement by now is five meters, and they excavated, the contractor excavated just only about mga point eight, one meter sa side, sa, on the edge of the concrete, and, and on the side foot, so, butang tang, six mangaling, five, six, plus one, plus one, eight, and the road is fifteen meters, so, naipang mga three meters more than sa, sa after the drainage, so, supposedly, the drainage should be put, ah, near the boundary, no, sa property line, sa, ah, mga la, lots. Um, I have here my mga pictures, by the way, um, during the, the letter, um, the letter the mayor nagi-submit dito, ako ang nag, nag-submit and attached with pictures. So, ah, on, on August twenty-five, on the session sa barangay, we have agreed nga ilahang is simog sa proper nga, nga location. I don't know, mga pinaka-unlaw, ilahang namanggit diwas dito. So, I am glad that, ah, honorable Dad Palad, ah, raised this matter kay, magpatabang yon, kay, ang barangay nagliklamahan, ah, by the way, I also apologize si engineer Arden, because he's living within the vicinity, ah, nag-sacrificyo po sila dito, because, ah, the method of construction of the contractor is kaniyang very poor, kaniyang dingbanghada nila tanan, dayon ang access, na lako-lako, problemsoon. So, maybe, um, salamat yon, mga inititabang sa, sa council, to, paunsa din siya nga, mag, mag, kuwan yon ta, ma, ma, the project will be, ah, put into proper location, ang design ma, matuman dyan kay, karoon, by now, ang whole length sa, both left side and right side sa Andul Street is being excavated, unya, deny kayo ang trabaho, so, kuwan yon ka ng, ma, mukha ka, suod ko sa imo balay, mungluti, maglikat-likan ka, okay, siguro mahatbong ka. Um, si Arden, San Puyo, si original Arden, na apos siguro isay mga, ah, kuwan po siguro kay, we called with, the other day, nagliklamo po siya sa kuwaso, ah, when I received the invit, invit, invitation letter to appear in this August money, kuwan po ko sa iha, mas mayo po, nga, almost experience ni mo, maso, tipo ni mo, thank you.
Ah, thank you, sir, ma'am. Would like to acknowledge the president, honorable Sabion. Thank you, sir.
Ah, honorable, ah, honorable, ah, engineer Palacunan, the barangay is a review, barangay review, review, parangay. The moment, matamatitod ang barangay council, wala matuman ang program of work, they have all the authority and power to stop the project.
But, ano, ako nga, ang isang ating practice in the authority, the power. Wala, wala, hindi na, hindi na practice. Complain sila dali. Barangay is a big deal. Ilan konserta, dugo kapit sa Dampalan. Minsipan council daw. Wala ba't di barangay council, kung sa'yo ilan move, kung sa'yo ilan action, kung sa'yo ilan plano. Na direktman to know of, and that. Don't have my program of work when barangay council, barangay captain, na may oversita. I apologize in college over barangay captain. Do not let the project go on or start, do not let it start. Without holding the program of work, I would regret time barangay captain. Why you can't hold? You're not doing this, and we're council. And now, functions and services barangay. So, the complaint ship kam, kung barangay council. That is the, uh, number one concern. Na, sa'yo meron, wala, karo, no'wala man sagatuman sa program of work. Wala may staff page under. Hah? Okay, madok po daw nga barangay captain, saya may inuloy nga, iban eh, namu ni project sa'yo barangay. So, wala, karo. Apa na, na, pastag di, wrong le, what wrong implemented? Wala, gama ilan ang tipe n'ya, po't eh, tepwa. Tiba? Hmm, biya't biya't. Pasti, kompili, pinubugan. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, more from the council, Honorable Seryon? Ah, Honorable Ramos, Kader, Kader.
Ah, diroko ay puntahan ah, engineer. Oh, ni'te, diroko ay comprehensive, uh, development plan about business, at mga video. Diroto, diroto, ganun, bisan, we're in, uh, ginipluipin barangay lang. Kaya na council magloko atong one time, at ito, kung ika talaga. Tete bahay, diya saan, saan ito, lausin tubig. Kada bila ulan, sakop ulan, pirke diroo bahay, dili ka sa'yo, ito na, all around. Ano ite, ni'to ite. Tom, gusto talaga po dito, wa, na, buwan atay comprehensive development plan. About village, at mga part, dili kayo na lang. Karo bang, kuta, karo bang, peace mill and development plan. At dugo, keseturian, unya, ngulay, banggit, karo, nung perba. Dito, di'yo, 2002, 15, 15, one time, 15, 15, di'yo. So, sa'na, ang 15 million nga, bill talagang for certain area na. Tadi ito na, wala, san dugan na, bangkiruan, and population, sir. Bangkiruan, kamo, di patekahino, kokenan, diroto, diroto, kana. Walo, box, village, say, peruma, problema, problema, about one, complete about one, kani, berfoi, oh, badin, so, diliya. Patutus, diroo, wala, peritemutan. Okay, dili na, ma- makaimo, dala, about your question, sir.
Um, we have submitted the comprehensive village plan together with the uh, office in PDC in 2017. And that is why na'tay mga plant controls, no'wala, project, uh, we are seeking, naghatag ma- plant control project. Because, um, that is part, no'wala, sa'to, we submit na, tumulad na, ngituman. But, uh, that to say, dili kayo sila, what is this? Dili kayo sila matinug-anon on the, so, and solving the, uh, the, the project is, the title of the project is plant control, but they are not so serious, a design. Ngayon, maso lang problem, kat, matamatay ka, diya sa'nan, bang, dili sa multivideo, um, sa bangkiruan. So, and, and, wala, 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 sa'na, amount of projects, that is 30, 50, 140. So, ma'na, to, uh, sentiments kay, uh, ma'ole, merdaan dan, lalina. Um, I would like to, to say, talang example. Sa humakitan na to, dili sa barangay treso Baguira, we can appreciate ang ilang, ang kan mga road, villa, of blocks. Kay, uh, lapad na, gindo, of properly, uh, managed, or properly constructed, I want village system. So, nak, tingala ko, basi, yun nga, naman ang barangay treso Baguira, or na, the project, uh, ang dahimo is only, uh, also DPWS, o, sa bangkiruan, karon, mura, maglausin dito kayang pagdahimo. So, I'm with that, during our meeting, robust, 25, together with the engineers, naghatay, dili sa'to, mga 4, 5. Dili, ba't, nga na, dahil, tingnan ako nga, maaiman kayang pagdahiman mo sa treso Baguira, o, kam sa population, o, sa bangkiruan nga. Yeah, dili, dili man.
Here, Kader. Let's address first the first problem, ako subaru sa tong complaint.
What is the solution, sir? About the project may bangkiruan, is something, the project may bangkiruan. Since atong, about other, patfokus na, to, 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 sir. What will be the solution?
Um, maybe we will invite sa, um, project engineer, siyong sa kwadag, sa DPWS. Because, uh, ang role outside municipal office is only monitoring. Yes, sir. So, maaimo, sir, nga, actually, I was instructed by, the ma'am Nene, ang talagang ingon, nga, pwede na, mainvite, wala, ang pwede power, gumo. Masut dito, nga, ato, ta dito, sa engineer nila, kay, one man, so, that is why, I would like, okay, I would get to men, nga, makwan na, to, project engineer.
Uh, iproba ita, ngalan sa, kang, sa, sa, pero, patalang, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mas, mas better, sir. Pati sa population, sir, because, bangdili, mga, sa'ya, ang, pika, as.
No, no, wait, dili, is only one barangay, bangkiruan. Kaya talaga, ng, ng tumalang, na, bangkiruan, ng, tumalang, na, population. Sa palang, po, sir, bangkiruhan, dili dyan.
Uh, including sir, kay, both sides, sir, ang, sa, on the side is purok menos, bangkiruan, then sa pika, siya, purok menos, sir. Nakasay, dili, siya, po, sir, both, ang, talaga, purok, and suffer, is sa construction.
Yeah, and, dala, ano, pika, sangkanan.
See, for the record, no, ang Adul Street is part of bangkiruan, dili dyan.
Bangkiruan, dili dyan.
Yeah.
Part of the nation, sir, of kiruan.
Okay, ah, Honorable Leader.
It's meeting level na, dala, dala, they're not here.
Yeah.
The chairman of the committee of infrastructure, who vice, this week, all the time. The meeting level na, dala. Sumpanan, ni'ri, to, the stage, but, uh, the, the, uh, two one.
Invite the P-LOK and then, once the P-LOK will recommend or is amenable to our request, they will inform us again to pass the amendment to the ordinance. And then we will revise our plan and our zoning ordinance for the purpose alone, which is peace mill. So, at all we know before is peace mill shortcut. But then, according to the, okay to siya, kay for purposes of conversion man to siya na tohili mo, at all before na mga daggo without reclassification. So, it was also approved by the DAR or converted from agricultural to any other purpose. So, wala siya, okay nalang to siya, okay nalang, talo.
So, we must accept application for reclassification until substantial.
Revised, sir?
Revised, that will take us about one year.
Ah, yes, sir, next year.
These people who wanted to convert their area and to convert their green, will be deprived of the opportunity. Opportunity to have business in this land.
Ah, yes, sir, during, that is why, during the training, sir. During the training, the San Diego Ambayan is also part of the team. So, if possible, during the kuwan, you should sit down together with the other planning team members. So, di ba the review na?
Ang focus ko, ang focus na, madri pride sila sa opportunity ba? Several months kasi nabang pulak, no? Several months, para sa, sa, sa reclassification. Then, we also, ano more part sa, sa EDU, madri pride punta sa reviews, na supposed to be. Ma-ato na 'yung, ah, Mr. Chair, with permission of the Royal Ontario, if the Chair would allow me to speak, uh, really on the matter, the ways by the Royal Ontario.
Uh, reclassification, Mr. Chair, again. This is a tool. For us to update our certification ordinance. As mentioned by, uh, the Municipal, uh, Development Planning, uh, Planning and Development, uh, Municipal Planning and Development Officer, it should not be a peace mill application for classification, there is no such thing as that. As I emphasize on my, on my previous speech. When there is a necessity to reclassify, so that we're going to update our certification ordinance, we have to go through the requirements. Number one, we have to call the attention of the Department of Agriculture. Number two, the BMR. Number three, all the, the, uh, agencies of the government, including DAR perhaps. So that we can sit down and we will listen to their side, whether or not this area has to be reclassified from agricultural to, uh, other purposes would be feasible, no? So, so that after that, the hearing thereof, after the meeting, there will be a new ordinance to be passed by the San Diego Barangay, updating our certification law for ordinance. So, there is no such thing as reclassification, there is no such thing as, you have to apply for a certain, uh, piece of land, for it, uh, to be so that the same will be reclassified from agricultural to residential or commercial, so that the same will be a prerequisite by the Department of Reform when you apply for conversion, there's no such thing like that. Uh, except otherwise, if there are new rules to by design, no? Pero, as far as my memory is concerned, delete, appointing a peace mill application for classification, if you wish to use your agricultural land other purpose, apply for conversion, and if you are doubtful of my statement, now, we can as well invite the DAR, invite concerning agencies, so that we can, because I've been continually objecting, no? The process and the mechanics that you are resorting to, you are allowing the, the peace mill application of reclassification, which is allowed under laws. It's wrong. So, that is why, again, just the way I emphasize, it's a tool, reclassification is has, this is our exclusive power of EDU, as a tool for us to update this certification ordinance, Mr. Chair.
I would like to ask one question to, uh, Samuel. I was informed by our, uh, studio, yesterday. The IDA will wait for our certification, that we have reclassified certain land.
Well, Mr. Chair, if, oh, yes.
This will be submitted through the DAR, so that you can convert this into whatever is the, uh, actual.
That's right, now. Uh, the, the point of DAR, as I would like to understand is that, that part of piece of land, applying for conversion will be within the updated zoning ordinance now, being reclassified. So, if, if that is the case, Mr. Chair, because I was the power of Mr. Chair, and I, I, I never heard about a certain person, mo apply pa of reclassification, that's not all, except otherwise, whom updated na talo na. Pero, as far as my memory concern, the right, Mr. Chair, if a certain owner of agricultural land would, uh, wish to use the, the agricultural land other than the agricultural purposes, apply for conversion, more generally, except if na apatari requirement basta, again, wala peace mill application for reclassification, there is no such thing as that. Because, mung reclassify kay, mung mo reclassified ta, na na may ordinance, kina na matag ordinance sa, iba pwede na na ang more, kis may approve na sa certification mo ito. Iba pwede na, nga, ordinary sa mga, because, mung na'yo rules na, ni-provide sa iyo, nalimot na kus iyo, nga, atong pali.
Thank you, but ano sa ngayon, ano sa ngayon itong meeting?
Uh, by November twenty-three for NHA project, sir, sa Aparang.
So, where do I come from, na talo?
That's right, Mr. Chair, my point here is, if you are, if you are doubtful about that, we can as well invite the DAR, because, aron nga, ang ilang legal office, no? Kay, as far as my memory concern, the right, again. Power of conversion is different from power of reclassification, it's largely under the local law and treaty. And, uh, reclassification is not a requirement, Mr. Chair, as far as my memory concern, right? Or, otherwise, kung napai-update, kung na, nga, requirement, kay ang DAR manggutan, ausya, apply ka conversion. Tangaon na na reclassify, na ba ni agricultural na talo, based on atong certification. Kung susunod, susuwaan, diha, of course, ilan na broken, because there are even areas, agricultural lands, bisan pa nasunod, bisan pa mareclassify ta, no? Uh, bisan pa nagutan, na, na reclassify na ng house or commercial or residential, ato yuta, based on application na to. Pangutan na talo, di na batin hanglan na talo, ang akong agricultural na reclassify talo, through a new ordinance, nga, industrial or commercial, di na batoong DAR for conversion. Yeah, just now, di na pwede, because those are ordinance, uh, those, uh, areas reclassified before, or, uh, no, sorry, after June fifteen nineteen-two-seven, bisan pa mareclassify na into other purpose, kinahangman pa't a conversion application, no? So, that is why, Mr. Chair, nga, ang reclassification is, atong power, used as a tool only para ma-update lang ta, sa atong nga, certification nga, ordinance for tax purposes. Of course, kay.
Thank you, sir.
Hey, what's up, Samuel? Hey, Dan?
I'm not.
Okay, what's up, Samuel, is there anything else?
Yes, uh, in my previous speech, uh, that, I hasted my previous speech from the recommendation of our FDO. So, that's why, nga, uh, nakasulti ko ato, it's good, nga, siya to explain. And, uh, sa ato, ang Mr. Regal, ha, reclassification does not concern only from any, uh, from an agricultural to any use, but also those already classified, but it means, na humanan na, nga, ginaw conversion, kumbaga after conversion, nga, na reclassify na, nga, from residential to other use, like residential to commercial, residential to industrial, no, ingon anak. So, that is also the other concern of our zoning ordinance, nga, nila siya, uh, from agricultural to any other use, nga, tinahanglan, uh, og conversion, na atay mga reclassification, nga, from residential to any other use also. So, most na ang concern, so, na maggudamutana, uh, engineer, panang about sa D-SOUD, uh, please, since a D-SOUD is bago, can you also explain to the body, kay, na may makauban mo, wala pa kayo, nakasabot, nakabalo? Yes? Uh, D-SOUD is the Housing and Land Use Regulatory Board, na create sila as a department, uh, Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development.
Engineer.
Sila, 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 oo, oo. But, uh, yes, uh, sorry, ang D-SOUD, where are, so, others a D-SOUD of HURB, HNA, uh, D-SOUD, basically, mung na conversion, the HURB, one into D-SOUD. The E is, uh, Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development.
Wala, wala na HURB, D-SOUD na.
Yeah, so, that's why, na ay mga bagong, mga, uh, mga requirement, no? Tinahanglan before, uh, before nga atuang ayuhon, or atong baguhon, which is already due, kay, naamantay number of years for that, no, mga tabang atuang CNBT, uh, tinahanglan na sa og orientation from the first, from personnel from D-SOUD, kung nga sila, mo, umidili to lecture, has on that.
Okay, may have some questions?
Okay, what's up?
D-SOUD. Can I, can I, can I, can I, dito, pariyos at two N? I apply sila, oh, conversion from residential to commercial?
Agricultural.
No, residential to commercial. Kung ano is, how to conversion? So, under what is a D-SOUD?
No, sir, sa kuwan.
So, it's not under D-SOUD, it's not given certain amount?
Ah, sila kasi, ato, thank you.
How would we spread to the African? Maybe even, nataisunin mo, pero, uh, classification, wala pa ka, tinaka, wala na, how would you explain that?
Yes, sir.
Can I apply, sir? I gusto malam, convert in ano, residential, nga, area din na into commercial.
Uh, no, can that, sir, for the next, by the time we will update our land use plan. But for now, as I have said, uh, ato na lang silang, pakuwanon sa zoning board of adjustment and appeals, kay sila ang would decide to grant their application, para they can perform their economic activities in that area. Because, sir, because, sir, ang area is classified as residential, but it's up for the zoning board to decide, kasi ang area is not yet, uh, uh, is not yet occupied by residents, wala pa siya kaayay mga balay for residential purposes. Kay dapat, uh, magdominate in that area are mga residential, uh, buildings or residents. But for now, since siya pa ang naa sa area, he can apply, kay na may mga criteria dito nga, iya hang, that should be justified during his application, kung mo conform basta.
I'm good, sir, on my side.
Yes, sir.
Not the experience, delete na miss you, the certification.
Ano, delete na, sir.
Once applied, bang delete na sa sugod.
Ah, yes, sir, kung they will be granted by the board, and then they can apply for this. What's up, Chair?
Okay, what's up, Samuel?
Yes, to, to clarify, um, ma, panang, can I refer from, uh, request, can I refer, yeah, request sa, panang two N, na pamagot ko, mga umaabot, di nila magot kay kami, um, ito na dito, endorse na, di nila sa ato, sa committee, but endorse this to the board, kay, kaba nung kung ano pa'y mga umaabot, uh, na run, na apply, so, itako na lang na'to, na di nila sa ato, di nila dilis sa kunian, to delete directly to, di ano, uh, board. So, kung naanggaling, nga, wato for, for diperan, um, I would like to advise, nga, endorse this to the FDO, para ang antidino na muhan dos dito sa zoning board.
Okay, okay. I think we are clear with that.
Thank you.
So, thank you, ma, thank you, Daniel. Okay, na ma visitos?
How much is, sir?
So, let's proceed. Huh? Okay, uh, we would like to inform the chairman of the in-puter, the brother of, uh, uh, endorse that Bang Kerwan is being referred to your committee. Uh, the engineer, kulan-kulang, and provide you with the name of the project engineer, and the duty, duty, related, so that they will be invited, together with the barangay officials of the barangay of Kerwan. And then, uh, those who wanted to join the committee meeting from this August party, and they would like to ask if, when are you going to call for the committee meeting, para makapalo do sila? Okay, citizens, what's up, Samuel, ano sa'yo? Tuesday on next week, Tuesday afternoon, okay, then? Okay, open, Tuesday next week. Oh, magulat katanda, mga, pitotakanda, mga.
101, that's eight three one zero and eighty three sixteen. Resolution approving interview declaring in full force and effect the following municipal ordinances. Ordinance number zero nine, that's five nine zero, that's twenty twenty one. Ordinance granting gratuities to all barangay treasurer and secretary, barangay secretary, who have rendered service in their respective barangays of these nine consecutive years upon retirement separation in the municipal P O B field and providing for the funds therefore. Item B, ordinance number zero nine, that's five nine one, that's twenty twenty. Ordinance institutionalizing the continuing education program of barangay officials in the municipal P O B field, establishing mechanism and appropriating facts for the forward. This ordinances are already declared over the table.
Okay, for information?
We are not committee report, sir.
Committee report, committee of the board?
Committee report. Committee report. Lord of Asia. Lord of what? Lord of San Juan. Nando. Ah, ah. Okay, ah, 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 rega.
Committee report, number three eight six. Subject. During endorsement that as the running of the agreement from the D I T C, from the Department of Communication and Communication Mechanism, remark and recommendation, after the careful study and deliberate consideration of the M O A before the committee of favorable endorsement by the P P L O or adoption.
What's the recommendation?
Implementation of electronic business permit licensing system, E V P L S. The committee has determined a condition to send M O A between the two parties considering uh considering the I T C as the national mandate to make available to L D U the software for the computerization uh computerization of the license system. Therefore, L D U have the uh adopt the P P L S software extended by the D I T C of M O A. Committee hereby recommend by the approval of M O A and giving the mayor authority the sign of saying in behalf of L D U if there is a problem, the resolution.
Do you move?
I de promote for the approval of the check. Uh, I de promote for the adoption.
Please, second, the honorable chair. Discussion, amendment, objection, debating. I move for the approval.
I move for the approval of the check.
The other motion, for the approval of the M O A.
Thank you.
Please, second, the honorable board. Discussion, amendment, objection, debating, the motion is being approved.
After we do that.
Uh, group. Please, uh, I de promote for the Resolution. Uh. Resolution.
Resolution granting the municipal mayor.
Got through, it's a sign.
So, after it's a sign.
Okay, the other motion. Please, second, the honorable panel. Discussion, amendment, objection, debating, the motion of approval of the committee. Next.
Honorable Chair, honorable.
Honorable.
Committee report, honorable chair.
Honorable Chair, honorable board. I have here one committee report. Committee report number three hundred ninety one, three ninety one. From the committee on appropriation and finance. Subject is supplemental budget number one for calendar year twenty twenty one of barangay Tawai. The amount of one fifteen thousand ninety three sixty seven tabos. And supplemental budget number two for calendar year twenty twenty one of barangay Buluan in the amount of one hundred seventy five thousand. Remarks and recommendations. Honorable Chair, the committee on appropriation to which was referred the supplemental budget number one calendar year twenty twenty one of barangay Tawai. And supplemental budget number two for calendar year twenty twenty one of barangay Buluan with its municipality for review and evaluation and approval. The said supplemental budget number one and supplemental budget number two has been referred to local finance committee through the municipal budget officer for technical review and preliminary review. After review, it is served by declare operative in its entirety effective upon its approval. Subject to the posting requirement under section fifty nine of Republic Act seventy one sixty and further subject to the conditions cited in the local finance committee review. In the implementation of its budget, the L D U must ascertain adherence to the fundamental principles enumerated in section zero five of the code. It is understood that the review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited or inconsistent with provision of law. The committee hereby recommends for its approval provided that compliance with the foregoing in the execution of the budget shall be the role, the sole responsibility of the implementing barangay government using the standard guidelines, procedure and the budget execution base prescribed under budget civil service laws, budgeting, accounting and auditing rules and regulation. So, in this honor, honourable chair, I move for the adoption of the committee report number three ninety one of the committee of appropriation.
Please, second.
Pardon, honorable chair. I move to pass a resolution declaring in full force and effect the supplemental budget number one, calendar year twenty twenty one of barangay Loa Tawai and supplemental budget number two, calendar for calendar year twenty twenty one of barangay Buluan. I so move, what do you adapt? I so move for the approval, honorable chair.
Please, please, second. Discussion, amendment, objection, debating, the motion of approval, committee is being approved. So, honorable chair. Tawain Buluan. Buluan, Buluan. Bulan Buluan. Okay. Is a pro leader, no? Uh, before that, Mr. Pro Leader, can we have a recess first? Hey, Prime Minister Lawik? If it's okay with the M O A number? You, you not know that, yeah? recess for thirty minutes. Okay, honorable chair. Okay, we are on the committee report of the committee of on health.
Hello. Um, I have one committee report, committee report number three ninety two. Subject. Uh, referral to the committee on health, an endorsement from the office, from the office of the municipal mayor requesting an approved resolution for financial assistance of COVID nineteen suspect in the amounts of fifteen thousand pesos each to be paid to Billy Ababa's funeral home. To read, number one, Marilo Antonio, two, Luel Delacerna, and three, Orlando B. Tacmo. Remarks and recommendations, committee upon verification with the office of the municipal health office hereby confirm and verify that the above named deceased persons were all COVID nineteen dead and COVID nineteen dead suspect and are worthy for a fifteen thousand burial assistance each to be paid to Billy Ababa's funeral home. Funds to be taken from A S E S. Move for the adoption of committee report three ninety two.
Please, second.
Move for a resolution authorizing, honorable mayor, to extend financial assistance to the following deceased person, Marilo Antonio, Luel Delacerna, and Orlando Tacmo the amount of fifteen thousand at burial assistance to be paid to Billy Ababa's funeral home. Fund to be taken from A S E S.
Please, second. Please, honorable chair. Discussion, amendment, objection, debating, the motion is being approved.
Thank you, honorable chair.
Okay, honorable chair. Okay.
Number forty nine, number zero. And you are authored by honorable Darame Catalunya an ordinance prohibiting drone operation within the, within one hundred meters from the jail facilities, providing penalties for bioventilating thereof and for other appropriations. To representing officer, the committee on rules, organization, and jurisdiction report refer the above mentioned ordinance has considered the same and has the honor to report it, but we saw was buried with the recommendation that the said ordinance be scheduled for second reading. Next, regular session. For matter. Disruption and discussion.
The disposals are commanded. Move for the adoption of this committee report.
This move, what you have? Please, second, the honorable. Amendment, objection, debating, the motion is approved.
I have three ordinances I have to present to the committee. I would not have the right to record this now because not one of the members of the committee or, so this was referred to two committees. Meeting on the rules of the audience and, and the question. Not that one of the members of the committee should submit the meeting today. The meeting was stuck to all, so the two of us, you know, members of the.
Okay, no more committee reports? Next, I will add to the body.
We are now on, we are now on the business on second, uh, third final reading, although we don't have any for the second reading. We have one, the, for third reading, we have the ordinance promoting the rights and welfare of the labor workers of municipality and providing for their qualification and funds for their benefits and incentives and support through pre-qualification programs.
Okay, presentation, honorable board. Third reading. Okay, who, those who are in favor of the ordinance, just raise your right hand and say, hey? Hi.
Wala pa naghihilitong ipatilit sa one, incorporate it sa, uh, old ordinance?
Nakasabi na, new, atong revise, wala? Ah, di, lang sa.
No, no, no. Say, you know?
Moment, the condition, di ba?
Wala pa ngang kitap tok, no?
Wala pa man? Wala pa.
So, what's the pressure? Does the agreement, the last time, you are?
It's such time na mata provide, ma provide na tao para you.
You may write for the presence of honorable twenty?
Yeah, I mean, bro.
No, uh, there was an agreement, that's time na. Yeah, but for the third reading, but sa kung madilitong duha.
Ma provide na.
Ah, ma provide na ng copy atong duha ka condition.
Sa final draft.
Final draft, huh?
After discussion, wala man. Wala na, tama siyente la niya.
What's the pressure of the chairman, you already called for the pressure?
Yes, but I was, uh, wala pa ngang pagbokan. You may, just we, we, we just make for the presence of honorable, the committee. Not minute, sir, for some more. Okay. For the main time, let's continue.
For other matters, sir.
Okay, other matters.
Uh, is Mr. Chair?
Honorable, you?
Uh, this is just relating, Mr. Chair. The ordinance, Mr. Chair, proposed ordinance which I, uh, this is already in the committee, Mr. Chair, on those. Uh, partly I drafted two ordinances, proposed ordinances uh relating to the benefits of the senior citizens. But I am agreeing to withdraw, Mr. Chair. Uh, the other one, which is the those, uh, those proposed ordinance is provide for three hundred pesos for the senior citizens during their birthdays. Uh, but I would pursue, Mr. Chair, the five hundred pesos per month, uh, per, for, during their birthdays, Mr. Chair. Uh, now, I would like also to make emphasis on this, and this is part and parcel of what we call basic services that we're going to, to, uh, render to our constituents. And we can even afford to incur loads for purposes whatever it is. But, uh, this, Mr. Chair, I just made computation that this will just take us about two point five or seven million allocation for the, for this purpose. And, uh, in fact, uh, T I alone, alone by, uh, T I by this time made a, an appropriation of close to of more than three million for the purpose of this similar ordinance to Mr. Chair. So, there's no reason for us not to also appropriate the same ordinance for, just, uh, if only uh we can be able to extend some help to our, uh, you know, senior citizens, especially those dying senior citizens, sir, sir. Thank you, sir, sir. But, uh, I move, Mr. Chair, for the record to withdraw the, the other one, the, just to give way. Uh, and therefore, I, I would rather pursue the other proposed ordinance, that o five hundred nga para sa massiver, that o three hundred ako sa i-drop, para nga, para ito, to long so in the meantime.
Anyway, during the second reading, you stand up your response, yes, please. So, there is a motion for the withdrawal, is it a motion?
It's a motion, Mr. Chair, uh, to withdraw the other three hundred, that o, kira three hundred, ah, no nga. It's jo, di niyo po, buka, buka sa, anyway, by starting, Mr. Chair, to, to.
Please, second, to the motion. Please, second.
Second.
Honorable board, second. Discussion.
I de promote five hundred, and then, uh,
Discussion. Amendment. Objection.
I de promote five hundred para otus ang citizens' support, we don't talk, we don't need the citizens. At least, di ha ta ko nito.
Okay, debating, the motion is being approved. Okay, other, others? Uh, if you don't buy any of one, I have one, very pleased, sir. This is regards to, pinibang, okay, I mean ordinance, you can sa barangay ba? Anang, anang bayad go sa, sa kuwan, sa rasura, say, kala, um. Caribes B? Uh, ang Iki likes with their ordinance daw, na, pa, kuwan o ninety pesos per month, say, ilang per household. Ganun ko tao, pumukha ng ordinance na approve na sa two eleven, na, na approve na sa dua. Kaya, tagan, inga po, prima. Pagabot sa palangan, mga esan certification, kaya, ilan pa na, ito, ah, so, kayo, di sa lumayad, kaya, di na makuha ng rasura. Yung sila, kuwan certification, kung, wala sa bayad-bayad sa ilan, Caribes B. Niya sa i, maputok, duha ka to, ibay-bayad, na kuwan ang ibera nun. Makuha sa indigency, di nakakuha, kaya, na, may relation. Ninety pesos per month. Ah, okay. It's part of the revenue, boss, yung ilang kung claim mo, buka sa, na, wala ko na, abio kanang public gearing, kung bilig, di kuwan say, ilang, assembly. Bilig mo, buka, matu, siya ipatawar, kuya, di ay, ang ilang ordinance, ya, approve rato, dito, mo, wala pa. Can I accept that? Can I accept that, kung ya, approve rato, sa two eleven, ang ilang ordinance? By next session, dala, next session, dala, next session, dala. Di ko kumro sa oman, of course, ako ba, naaman, ninety pesos, twenty pesos, nine, ninety pesos. Ipa na to, ang ilang household, isa kalibo kamo, pagdipinta, talapula, sa income nila. Ninety thousand? So, for the next session, mo, gato ng ikwana, bro. Okay, another, others?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just for the record, Mr. Chair. I reviewed, Mr. Chair, the supplemental budget number two and I found out, Mr. Chair, that there are items where uh, if this can be will, uh, verified, the, the, the market value of the items, Mr. Chair, is too used, Mr. Chair, and I cannot, uh, imagine the, 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 the difference, Mr. Chair. As just a caveat, uh, to our, uh, bids and awards committee, Mr. Chair, there is always time to recall, that is why I'm just going to move a warning to them. Because restricted period for crimes under Republic Act thirty nineteen. The Anti-Graff Antra Practices Act will prescribe twenty, uh, fifteen to twenty years, Mr. Chair. And, uh, Mr. Chair, just to, just a warning for them, oh, nga na, kunta, kanao tang, this is na, free, po. Na presyo, hangat opo, nga ipangkofi hak, nga ni po, ma atrobiado, hangat usang, nga panugnanan, gato ang mga katauhan sa long so, si B B, Mr. Chair. Just a caveat, a warning, Mr. Chair, to the bids and awards committee, Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, next, honorable, what is? Okay, honorable, daw pa na?
After consideration sa ordinance nga, ni honorable, John Pita Pilip kaya, one o clock po siya makabalik. So, uh, ang last session, siya mismo to, ang na, ni bonus there nga, ipa, ipadilit niya ang uh, there under section nine, incentives and benefits, letter G, medical assistance, so ang letter H, funeral and burial assistance na namatay approved na ordinance sa tuang assistance. Muto nga, katulang niya hang, uh, gi, bonus niya nga ipatilit, then aside from that, wala na yun, like kausaban. So, siguro, kung pwede nga, ato na lang puti, mati kataron for the, the third reading, mapubahan na to ang ordinance.
Litko sa, mapubahan na to, dito?
Eh, ayang-yan, kung pwede, ato ng, yeah, prove, kaya anyway, kato naman, for deletion, laman to, dua. Yeah. Ang medical assistance and funeral.
Okay, it's okay with the body? Is it okay? And also with the secretary? Please, claimantong, ni, ni honorable, daw pa na, uh, need ang dua ka section. For yeah, na ni medical assistance. Okay. So, are we going to raise our hands again, or are, are I'm going to?
Rule.
Rule. Okay, raise the hands, sorry, okay. Those who are in favor with the, uh, the, uh, ordinance of honorable, complete, just raise your right hand and say, hey? Okay, see that this, so the ordinance is hereby approved.
Thank you.
Another, another, others? Please, na, na, sa, maganay, ah, ano mo is submit, daw? Ang katung vaccination.
Sa ako lang, kaya, kinahalala ko siya, i-submit sa senior, kaya, mobile condition sa entry. Picture lang, ipapicture sa inyo stop, then i, send sa kuwa kasam.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, asa malato, daw, tulung magabukun, ah, kaya, aspra na, po, isay lumabak, napupay. Okay.
December one, two, three, so kung sure mo, ako, ako, wala, pag, kuwan ang tadaan para makapabukta, kaya ang booking sa Irap Lano ba?
Hui, December one, two, three?
Yes, December one, two, three.
We are going, still going to have our supplemental, kaya mapatitong, trabe, patawag na to, tong, balik, pisan.
Kung isang three decided, joy, si, tumibaan siya, okay, isang three decided, yun, na, kung kaya, makapabukta daan, kaya wala, uh, ako ang gano, is, ganita sa pagadian, kaya, sa, sa buanga, magkaswalta. So, mag, gaunahan ay na, gaunahan ay na, um, kabukin.
Magbarakur na ita.
Ah, pwede rapos.
Balik, kayo, pulog.
Pwede rapos. Oh, pali, pwede rapos. Pero, so.
So, you to mixo sa, sa, tong, bati tupisan, kaya?
Yes.
No? Makapabukta, wala na, ibayad.
So, magsi, so, uh, uh, kuwan na, ako, kung sa inyo gusto, magbarakur ba, or Irap Lano, pero, ang katung, dipatset na ko, nga, fair, is for plane.
Barakur na, ah, barakur?
Magkarabuk sa kenan?
Hindi, Irap. Magbarakur at eh, patagat na, Irap Lano na. Okay, anymore, other matters?
And finally, Mr. Chair. I just for the record again, Mr. Chair, that I'm happy, Mr. Chair, that, uh, the, also, there is also one guy, uh, si John Buat is doing live cooperation on our session. This is, uh, relating to the freedom of, uh, information of our people relating to the matters concerning what we're doing in life. Because, uh, I was, I, I, I got information that I was, there is now I was dubbed as Mr. Live, according to, oh, and, uh, I, I, I never ev, ever ask for pati larot, Mr. Chair, no? Uh, it is just a matter of principle that we need to be transparent of what we're doing here. We need, na, we can, kaya, na, pa live, na, kaya, pa sikat, ah, no, I did not, I do not, I do not need that, Mr. Chair. I have my registration, kung gusto ko, pay, po rin na, no? But it is why, Mr. Chair, I'm happy that, uh, kung, kung, uh, na, na, si John Buat, kung kinsap ko, ang mga stop, na, kung saban, at least, can he do so? Because, so that this is, uh, this, this, uh, this will become a more transparent uh, all of, tangguyang bayan, para may inform mga to, mga tao, kung sa itong bibuhatin, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, another, another, others? There's a motion for adjournment? Second, the honorable? Is there any objection with adjournment? Nah? The motion is hereby approved, adjourn. Give it back, Mr. Right?
Wala pa eh, ito, wala, kala to, camera, sa, 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 sa. Ah, swa, na yo?
Ang atay, mandali, blogger, ano, blogger, si.
Wait.